Good evening, I would like to call the City Council meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, June the 4th, 2019, to order. Welcome, we're glad to have you this evening to come out with us. As we normally do, we will get started in just a second with a moment of silence, and we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. As we go to our moment of silence, please do keep the families from the shooting in Virginia Beach, Virginia, and your thoughts and prayers. Another terrible tragedy that we have to deal with here in our country, we're so sorry about that. We have had our flags lowered the last day or so in remembrance of that, and please keep those families and your thoughts and prayers. So if you will, please join us now for a moment of silence. And the pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now, first, on our agenda tonight, we have a matter scheduled for a public hearing. Tonight is our FY 2019-2020 annual budget. We will hold this hearing tonight to receive any public comments regarding the annual budget for the fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, for the City of Lenore. And upon conclusion of this public hearing, the council may choose to adopt the enclosed FY 2019-2020 budget ordinance. We'll now open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning our annual budget, please come forward and give us your name. And seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and turn it over to City Council for any action or...
Do you want me to give a brief highlights?
That would be great.
Mr. Mayor, council, just a few highlights of the budget for folks that may have not seen the budget to this point. The budget is balanced with the current tax rate of 58 cent per 100. That'll be the seventh year in a row we've had that tax rate. Also, we include the .0085 rescue readiness tax in the budget. The only increase in the general fund will be a dollar increase in the solid waste fee, and that will go to help us acquire a second brush truck to go back and hopefully speed up that operation. But all other fees in the general fund will remain the same. Water sewer fund, that is balanced. We do have a 1.1% water rate increase and a 2.5% sewer rate increase. That overall increase is roughly .87 cent per month for the average user, and all other fees remain the same. But otherwise, the budget's balanced with, hopefully, addressing all your priorities you set in your retreat.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I would, I'd like to take a chance to commend the manager and certainly the staff for, number one, the way they conduct the budget process. It's very inclusive of the council, it's very, there's a lot of study that goes into it, and I continue to be amazed at how well we were able to do keeping taxes where they are, keeping fees where they are with the increases that you noted. We continue to make great strides and be able to plan ahead as we need to, but that all comes from very judicious management and involvement from our staff, and we continue to get things done doing them ourselves that otherwise we would have to go out to the market and do, and that's always a benefit that shows up in our budget. Our fund balance continues to be extremely healthy, well above what is required of us. So I wanted to let you know, we as a council certainly appreciate your good work and the good work of you folks out there in the audience. It's all because of you, and our citizens can be proud, and I'm sure they thank you when they see the results of this budget. With that, if there's no other discussion, I would like to make a motion that we approve the financial year, fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget as it has been presented to us.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Perdue. Let me reflect also, I feel the same way, thank you for that, seeing what you did, and certainly we all appreciate all the hard work that goes into this. We don't enter into this lightly, it is the toughest time of probably anything that we have on this council is to make sure of our budget, and we're trying to do everything we can for our citizens and to make it, keep our services as we have, and that sometimes is hard to do, but we, with the great work of our manager and all of our staff, all our department heads, we do, we find ways to keep things going and work with what we have a lot of times, and wait till, sometimes till we can do better things, and we've done that very well, so we do appreciate everything.
And we do appreciate the staff participating with us in the spring as we have a retreat and planning, and we give the staff and the manager our list of priorities, and this budget is very well in response to that, and we appreciate that.
Yes. Any other comments? I know you all feel the same, we do appreciate that.
Both of you guys stole the thunder, man.
We're the only ones stolen. Well, no, we're not, but we've been on here a long while.
Wait a minute.
No, that was very well said, I couldn't agree more.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for all you do. We have a motion from Councilmember Perdue that we accept the budget ordinance as presented from our staff, and we'd certainly appreciate to get that again. So if no other discussion, I will call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. That passes unanimously, and we thank you for your hard work on that, and we look forward to putting that into play on July the 1st, as we move forward. Okay, we will move on then to consent agenda items. Our consent agenda tonight consists of several items. Item A are minutes from our City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Item B is minutes from our City Council Budget Work Session, Thursday, May 23rd, 2019. Item C is a capital project budget ordinance. This is for the Uni4 Consortium Home Program. If we approve this of the 2019 Capital Project Budget Ordinance for this Uni4 Consortium Home Program in the amount of $1,452,000 as submitted. Item D is the Capital Project Budget Ordinance for the Community Development Block Grant Funding, which is called CBDG. Approval of this would be 2019 Capital Project Budget Ordinance for the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $135,877 as submitted. Item E is the Capital Project Budget Ordinance, this will be for a closeout of the 2017 Water System Asset Inventory Grant. Is, this is approved, that we close out the 2017 Water System Asset Inventory Grant. There's a note, the project had a total project budget of $80,000, and the project was complete as of May 2019 with a total expenditures of $79,200, and in-kind contributions with a value of $1,027 were utilized. Item F is a Capital Project Budget Ordinance, this is a closeout of the 2017 Wastewater System Asset Inventory Grant. Approval of this would be for just what I said, the project had a total budget, total project budget of $140,000, and the project was complete as of May 2019 with total expenditures of $127,564, and in-kind contributions with a value of $3,059 were utilized. Item G are budget amendments, this is a recommendation from staff for approval of amendments to be made to the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, as follows. Number one, adjustments to the general fund with a zero net effect to fund balance. Number two, adjustments to Lenore Tourism Development Fund with a zero net effect to fund balance. Number three are adjustments to the Water Enterprise Fund with a zero net effect to fund balance. Item H is the Engineering Service Contract, this would be with McGill Associates. Recommendation is to approval to enter into an engineering service contract with McGill Associates for the Crossroads Sewer Replacement Project. Please note that McGill Associates was selected after an RFQ process as the best qualified engineering firm for this project. That is your consent agenda items, I will open it for any discussion from council or any questions. Or motions.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented, items A through H.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilmember Thomas that we accept the consent agenda items, A through H, as presented. If no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. We will now move to requests and petitions of any citizens, if there is any citizens that would like to address the council tonight, this is the time on the agenda to do so. And seeing no one, we will go on then. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening. We'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. First is the Chad Triplett and Tulane Blacktop Band will perform on the square Friday night from 6:00 to 7:30. That is, we're calling it the wingin', swingin',...
Swingin', wingin', moon.
Swingin', wingin', moon in June.
Moon in June, yeah.
So they're performing from 6:00 to 7:30, and then from 8:00 to 10:00, we'll have Throwdown Jones performing on the square. So please come out and join us downtown for that. The City-County Service Committee will meet on Monday, June 10th, at 11:45 a.m. The Caldwell County EDC will meet on Tuesday, June 11th, at 8:00 a.m., and that'll be held at the Civic Center. And then the Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, June 13th, 6:00, that's the Third Floor City Hall. And then a reminder that we're gonna let you know early in advance that City Hall will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day.
Might add one thing to that, the Charters Freedom Dedication will be the day before that, July the 3rd, on the square, on the, at the location of the new Charters of Freedom, and that will be at 9:00 that morning. So we invite all of you to be there, and certainly thanks to our Public Works Department and others who have had so much to do with being a part of that, it's great, and we're very honored to that, to have these wonderful charters located in our downtown and on our Courthouse Plaza. So, a place where they're taken care of, Mr. Rohr, you have to work with them every day, don't you?
The Charters of Freedom?
Yes, you do.
Yes, we do. We're glad to be associated with them.
Yes, I know you are. So, anyway.
9:00 that morning.
9:00 on July the 3rd will be the dedication ceremony. Go ahead, sorry.
Tonight we have a number of items for the council action. The first one is the Caldwell County Water Sales Agreement. As you know, we've been selling wholesale water to Caldwell County for a number of years. I think the first contract I observed, I think, was signed in 2000, no, 1992. It's been amended several times over the course of that contract. We still have several years remaining, I think it expires January 1st of 2022. But the last several years, we've discussed, how do we modernize our wholesale contracts with all of our utility customers? We did that recently with Baiton Sawmills and also the Sawmills Wastewater Contract. So through discussions with the county, we have proposed tonight for you a five-year contract beginning July 1st, which would authorize sales of 1.5 million gallons a day of drinking water at our wholesale rate. With that, this will benefit the city in several ways. First of all, it streamlines our process and makes the contract similar to the other contracts we have, but also it provides an opportunity to encourage conservation of water. Currently, the contract with the county is a take or pay, either use the water or pay for the water. So if they don't use the water, they have to pay, so they have no encouragement to go back and try to save water, conserve water. So with this, this will be just like our other customers and be everybody on the same page, and the county approved it last night at their board commissioners meeting. So I'd recommend approval, and I know Rafferty Thomas is in the back, he worked on this a great deal, and Rafferty, do you have any comments to add?
I think this goes a long way to help moving this forward, and all of our great...
Okay. You've heard the recommendation from the city manager that we approve this agreement, the water sales agreement between the City of Lenore and Caldwell County to provide up to 15, 1,500,000 gallons of drinking water per day at the applicable wholesale water rate. We need a motion.
I think this is a long time coming, and it's great to get everybody on the same page, so I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay, we have a motion for Mayor Pro Tem Willis to approve the water sales agreement as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Okay.
Tonight we also have for your consideration several minimum housing code or minimum housing abatement ordinances. With that, I'll invite Jenny Wheelock, Planning Director, up to go back and add additional comments. The first one you have tonight is 839 Creekway Drive. This is the old right-way drive-through that is, it's kind of falling down, and we've got numerous complaints on this property over the years. What this would do tonight is call for a public hearing on this, since it is a commercial property, for Tuesday, June 18th, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. And Jenny, do you want to add to that?
No, I guess just it's a typo, I apologize, it's not minimum housing ordinance, it's actually under the nuisance code in this case. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions concerning this particular property, 839 Creekway Drive?
You have the photos in your package of the property, I think everybody's familiar with the property.
All the numbers are specified, PIN numbers and everything. Okay, we're gonna do them one at a time. Yeah? Okay, then we'll need a motion...
This will call for the public hearing.
To call for a public hearing concerning this particular property.
Make a motion to call for public hearing.
Have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to call for a public hearing for this minimum housing ordinance for 839 Creekway Drive. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
The next item you have is the minimum housing ordinance for 1519 Barco Street. I know we have someone in the audience here, I think, wants to speak to that, but Jenny, do you want to go back and describe the property and the process on this one?
Sure, I think the most helpful page in your packet for this, and like all of our minimum housing abatement ordinances, we take ordinances forward as a last resort. We always want to give owners a chance to be able to comply with the code themselves. When an owner is unable or unwilling, that's when we step in and we take an abatement ordinance to this body. If you approve it, it would authorize staff to go in and abate, in this case it would be a demolition. The timeline shows that we have been enforcing since November of 2018. They have not, somebody has signed for all of the letters, makes sense, who are well aware of the order to abate, they have failed to do so. I believe the property is also still occupied. It is not legal for it to be occupied, but we still do have some people living there. This ordinance would also allow us to affix a placard to the structure declaring it unfit for human habitation, and the use or occupation of the building for human habitation is prohibited and unlawful. Now it'd also help us with the situation out there until we can get it demolished. The cost of demolition will be put on the property as a lien.
Okay. I'm scripted. If you don't mind, would you come to the podium? Thank you. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
My address? My name is Michelle Griffith, and my address is, I'd give you my P.O. Box number, 126 Hudson.
Okay.
Yes, I did sign for the letters, and I am not able to fix the house, my brother lives there. He has no other place to live, so...
Sorry, that's okay.
But that's what's been going on, he just didn't have a place to live, and he's been working on it, but we are unable to fix it.
Do you have any, I mean, were you making any plans for it, or?
Yeah, in time, I was planning, trying to help him, just some things happened that I wasn't able to at this time, and so therefore, he hasn't, I don't know what he's gonna do about where he's gonna live. That's the only thing.
Okay, but it's been declared...
Yeah, I understand.
Right, so, under the circumstances it's in, there's no, I mean, if that's the case, then you can't continue living there, is that, Mr. Attorney, am I...
I would guess so.
Okay, that's one I'm...
As far as I know, this is all legal and proper, I think you're authorized to do it, and it appears the council and the staff have followed the rules, so if it's been declared uninhabitable, it's not safe to be there, and I guess it would be illegal to do so.
Okay. Thank you, we're certainly, I mean, I think it sounds like it's been given a lot of consideration over time to be something happening to it, and obviously there's been a lot of issues with it, so...
Yeah. Okay. Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to be here, so...
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Sorry, Captain, the council. Of course, we're calling for a public hearing, so...
This one here is action. Commercial property was for hearing.
Okay, this one is just, actually, we would make the recommendation to abate the property.
Yeah, the ordinance.
Yeah, adopt the ordinance.
Or no, it's to abate the property, yes.
It's a tough situation, and I feel for the family, but we also have a greater responsibility for the city and for the neighborhood and for the safety of the area, so having read through this and based on the advice of staff, I would make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to approve the abatement, order of abatement for the property located at 1519 Barco Street, with all the PIN numbers and everything that are listed. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Okay, next property.
Mr. Mayor, also you have 530 Stage Street, similar type activity. Ms. Wheelock, you want to review that one?
Sure, that, this is a property that is currently vacant. Again, we have an owner that has signed for the notices, and it's just failed to act, and this is one of those that we don't think we're gonna achieve compliance in other ways, so we went ahead and are asking to do a city abatement on this, and the cost of abatement will be added as a lien to the property. Just as a side note, we always do try to send, when we do have occupied properties that are declared unfit for human habitation, we try to send them to either Michael Denis with the Housing Authority or Yoke Fellow, because they are those groups that have those resources, so I guess that would be the next step, is to start trying to find another place to split. The other thing I've got before you too, just a little snapshot on all of the enforcement that we've done, since it's been a while since you've had these types of ordinances before you, and I'm happy to speak on that, you know, after a motion or...
Okay. Okay, you've heard the recommendation for a order of abatement for the property located at 530 Stage Street. Council attorney, over to you for any discussion and/or motion.
Make a motion we approve.
Mayor Pro Tem Willis makes a motion to approve the order of abatement for 530 Stage Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously.
Now she'll give you an update on this.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. I just want to really thank you for your support over the years in being patient as we tackle this problem, because it's definitely something that we start cases, and they can sometimes take over a year to work to completion. Some of you will remember in 2014, when we split code enforcement between police and planning, and then we developed the minimum priority formula, because we had a backlog of over 200 cases that had been opened at one point in time and never followed through with or closed out. In that time, we have actually closed 197 files, which is really phenomenal. I didn't even realize how far through we were until we started pulling these numbers together. We do have 43 properties still on the minimum housing priority formula, but we've quit using it as much as a tool. Neither of these two properties actually were even on it, because we're able to take things and make decisions about them as they come. You can see some of our abatements, our numbers got better in the later years, because we started sending some to strategic foreclosure. What we learned early on is when we tore down a house like the two unfortunately here I had before you tonight, you put the lien on the property, we still don't own the property, so we're unable to sell it, and there's still this foreclosure process that has to be gone through, so we've been diverting enforcement cases to foreclosure in order to get them back in the hands of private individuals that are able to make the repairs. So I think that's overall been successful. The other thing I want to highlight is that we actually closed five mobile home parks in 2014 and put seven more under code enforcement, which was quite an effort, but we used to get a lot of minimum housing complaints coming from our mobile home parks, and right now we've only got one that is still sometimes problematic. So you can see in 2018 and 2019, that one park has been under enforcement, and they actually have one trailer in there that's condemned and needs to be removed, but for the most part, it's back in compliance. And then on the bottom I put, you know, we do traditional code enforcement, but we also do a lot where we get a phone call, and we go out and do an inspection with a landlord, and we direct them on what to fix, and we never actually put them under enforcement, and it gets fixed, and then the tenant is happy and the landlord is happy, and we kind of just move on with our life. So we're trying to be as efficient as we can and not necessarily doing everything through a formal enforcement process. We've also got a list of people that want houses, so when we get with somebody that is in trouble, now, I can't fix it, I don't have the money, sometimes we're able to make a connection there just by offering a phone number, and then they buy the house and are able to fix it up. Also, our community partners like Habitat, we do the same thing, if it'd be a good lot, sometimes Pete's able to step in and take care of it, so we really do try to look at each case individually and come up with the best outcome for the neighborhood. And so that's why you don't see more ordinances before you. Certainly, I appreciate the funding that has been allocated for the demolitions, because it's an important tool, but I just wanted to show that full picture of all of the work that we do put in on this issue. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
We've come a long way from where we were, maybe less than four years ago.
Absolutely, yes. Great job.
And the police doing nuisance abatement and grass has made a huge difference, and they're just rocking it, so that partnership, I think this was a great move for the city in 2014, and we're gonna keep on at it.
Great report.
Very good.
Glad to see things moving. Okay, go ahead.
We have one more item not for action, and I think, Mr. Reverend Perkins, do you want to accuse yourself for this one? We have to leave, accuse him from action.
You don't have to go outside or anything, you stay in.
Oh, you.
We have to vote him, right?
You have to actually, you have to explain the conflict, and then, it has to be recused, and then another member of council will make that motion.
Okay. My conflict is, is I am the pastor of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and we're in the process of offering a bid for the property next to our properties, so therefore...
Which is owned by the city.
Which is owned by the city, so therefore I'd like to have permission to recuse myself for that purpose.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion to recuse. Mr. Perkins?
We have a motion for Councilmember Stevens to recuse Councilmember Perkins from this particular purchase offer at this time. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That would be six of...
Running the lead.
Five, excuse me, five of... Oh, we have six, right?
Mr. Mayor, council, we have received an offer of $2,500 to purchase the property on Bill Street, again, adjacent to Mount Pilgrim. With that, if council decides to accept the offer, we'll put a notice publication in the news topic and run that for 10 days, and we receive no upset bid during that period of time, we'll bring it back to you on the 18th to go back and consider formal action on that. But if you want to proceed, just make a motion to authorize the clerk to go back and begin the process. And the five deposit, bid deposit for the property has been made, so...
Any questions at this time, anybody would like to ask? It is the property next to Mount Pilgrim that was the community garden there, which has been vacated, all that has been moved to our other community garden over on College Avenue, thank you, on that, so, just to let you know where it is, if you, I'm sure you're familiar with it. Okay, we need, if there's no discussion, we need a motion to let the, this legal process begin, and we will then put a publish to the news topic and others, starting a 10-day upset bid period, as required by North Carolina General Statute's 168 days, 269, if you accept this.
Make a motion to call for a public hearing and pursue this purchase.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to call for a public hearing.
Pursue the sale of this property.
That's right, pursue the sale of... That's right, pursue the sale of the property as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That's five of.
We can bring you back in now.
Okay. Now we have to bring him back.
I don't think you need to make a motion for it, I think it's just for that, for the purposes of that vote. You come back in automatically. Congratulations.
Welcome back.
Councilmember Perkins is reinstated.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hildebrand?
May I just go back for one minute for Ms. Wheelock? I just have a question on 530 Stage Street for the abatement process. This house is under construction. I mean, they're doing a lot of work in there, and somebody is, and I'm just hearing it say it's rebating, so is there some wires crossed, or?
I mean, they've signed for everything. My understanding was that they changed hands, and there was some work that was started, and then it was abandoned or changed hands again or something. We will definitely verify that we're at the right property, you know.
Yeah, well, it's been remodeled. I mean, these guys, there's a whole construction crew there that is remodeling from the inside out. They put a new roof on, tore out the inside, put sheet rock up.
Like a permit for this?
Bunch of stuff.
Are you, are you on the same property? Are you seeing the pictures that we're seeing?
Yeah, I'm looking at the house. Yeah, you can ride by there now and see.
Don't look like this anymore.
I'm looking, it doesn't look like this. So I'm just wondering if.
One thing that has happened in the past, now, these abatement ordinances, you've adopted it, we can hold the recording of it, but sometimes people come in and owner bait at the last minute, and that, it doesn't preclude them from doing that. So if they have brought it up into compliance before we, I mean, we don't have this, the money to abate, this will come out of next year's budget, so we won't be able to do anything until July 1st anyway.
I mean, it's good, it's gonna be an improvement for the community, but I just didn't, I didn't understand the abatement, then they are doing the remodeling.
I'll verify it with the housing inspector, but.
It looks good.
Typically, we wouldn't take an ordinance this far forward if somebody was willing to invest into, into work. They've signed for all of the orders to demolish.
We need to investigate, of course.
Signed for them, but did not respond to them?
Didn't respond to them? It seems like if they were.
I also have the impression it's an abandoned project.
The way you would have think that, if they were doing something there, they would respond to the.
The house does not look like this now. I mean, they've done a turnaround job on it.
But you just don't tell us this after we already voted for it?
So I'm saying, where was this discussion? Why did you say that?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't look at it until I was flipping through, and I thought, wait a minute, this is what we just talked about. I didn't see it until afterwards.
Give him five minutes off.
Well, as, as it is, it stands as is, except we don't, you know, you can go back and verify the whole situation.
Absolutely. Well, I will verify, and I can report back to you, the, the order of abatement that was adopted, that is sort of our, our last resort. We won't spend money on it if we don't have to spend money on it. There are plenty of other structures out there, so.
Good.
We'll, we'll look into it.
Scott, do we need to do anything that gives you guys the latitude to stop this, or?
We have that authority, but we'll bring it back. We'll report in two weeks. We're not gonna tear it down in the next two weeks, so we'll come back in two weeks.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we'll.
But you see, it's posted on the house.
I'll report back.
I need to look through this thing.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We will move on to the report and recommendations of our city attorney. Mr. Rohr, anything?
No, no, thank you.
All right, I do have a couple of quick announcements coming up for a couple of our board impending appointments to our Winore Tourism Development Authority. We will recommend to you, and this would not be done to our June 18th city council meeting, but for that board, Brenda Floyd, who is director of the J.E. Brawlhill Civic